All right, we're gonna call the meeting to an end. This is the regular village board meeting for Monday, July 25th. Please join me for the pledge of allegiance.
Pledge of allegiance to the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice in its heart.
The clerk will call the roll.
All right, President March. Trustee Moravka. Trustee Jones.
Here.
Trustee Slus.
Here.
Trustee Hudson.
Here.
Trustee Bowden.
Here.
And trustee Sturba.
Here.
Public comments. Anybody have any comments? Okay. We'll take a look at our consent agenda. We've got the minutes of the July 11th, 2022 regular village board meeting. And then we have the payroll accounts payable. In the payroll for the period ending 7/9, we've got a total of $53,072.2. Accounts payable for the period ending 7/22. Funds coming from the general fund, $49,399.77. Permit and escrow fund, $14,600. MFT fund, $20,009.2793. BDD fund, $3,0457.25. And TIF number 1, 922, for a total of $89,306.95. And I will entertain a motion to accept the consent agenda.
Motion.
Second. Motion by Slus, second by Sturba.
All right, roll call vote. Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Is there somebody here from Aqua? No? Okay. We'll move on to, in our committee reports, Christmas in the village. Nick?
Yeah, we just went over the items and everything that we discussed in the last meeting and moved forward. We did send out the sponsorship letters to businesses, so if someone's seen those, you know. If you didn't get one, we probably got a couple more that's gonna be going out this week or next week, too, for that. And then we discussed about the judging for the house decoration and what we're doing with that. So it'll be a little bit different than last year. And then also, our next meeting will be in September.
Good, great. Administrator Amy, anything?
I just wanted to let everybody know that the planning zone commission had a training session at their last regular scheduled meeting. So that was July 20th. We had some trainers come in from the American Planning Association Illinois chapter. And it was about a two and a half, three hour training. And it was really, really, really good.
It was, it was. I enjoyed it.
Trustee Hudson was there, trustee Bowden. And we had a good turnout. We invited some area communities to participate. So just gave, you know, them some guidance on what their role is, how to evaluate cases and legal aspects. I think it was really good.
Great, great. As far as engineering and public works, the engineer is not here from Robinson. And also, Bob, our public works superintendent is on vacation. So Amy's gonna just touch on some of the things that are going on that they were gonna report on.
So for public works, the department's done with curb spraying of weeds. He is, Bob, is in contact with Robinson on the railroad street project, the parking project. The holdup there is just Nycor has to be moved a little bit deeper. It's pretty shallow, so we're working on doing gas main move before we can start construction. All the MFT road projects have started. And J.J. Knoll will start doing the concrete, so it'll be nice. The department's been watering trees and the flowers, keeping them, keeping up on them really well, so they look really nice. From our engineer, really the same updates on the MFT projects and railroad street. Alhawn Street, they are supposed to be doing driveway work and start restoration this week. So it isn't finished, but they're, they're coming out to get that finished up. That's about all from them.
Okay. All right, as far as the treasurer report, in the general fund, we do have $12,166.173. This is cash and investments on June 30th, 2022 is the total. And then, including building permit, escrow, MFT, customer utility, capital improvement, vehicle service, business district, and the TIF 1 and 2, for a total of $13,903.210. As far as the mayor's comments, and we don't have any there, old business, I don't believe there's any of that. So we'll get right, right into the new business. And we're going to look at a resignation for Andre Robu, effective 7/11/2022. He's moving on to something else. And we have a letter of resignation. And I'll accept a motion to accept that.
Motion.
Second. Slus, Sturba.
Johnson, Sturba, okay, roll call vote. Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Okay.
Item number two, accept the appointment of Donald Preston as part-time officer effective 7/25 at the rate for the position. And I'll accept a motion to approve. Motion, second.
Johnson, Sturba.
Johnson, Sturba.
Okay, roll call vote. Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And trustee Slus.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Item number three is again for the police department, accept the appointment of Nathan Hess for a full-time position effective starting date of August 8th. Again, I'll entertain a motion to accept. Motion, second.
Johnson, Sturba. Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And trustee Slus.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Item number four, accept the resignation of the village clerk, Karen Leclerc, effective July 31st, 2022. We are sorry to see you go.
I'm sorry, too.
But life goes on, so.
Yes, life goes on, that's right.
I will entertain a motion to accept that resignation. Motion.
Second.
Okay. And Slus, trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
And trustee Jones.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Item number five, you have a special permit application in your packet for the parade for golf carts. Piattone High School Students Council, William Robinson, 605 North Street, 91722. 4:00 PM start, 3:45 PM lineup at Piattone High School. Is there somebody here that wants to talk about that?
Sure, can I come on?
Yeah, absolutely.
I'm new to this. So my name is William Robinson. I am one of the student council advisors over at the high school, along with Mary Reitman here. She is the other one.
Hi.
We are looking to do something new this year, and that is to implement a golf cart parade that is open to the community. Hopefully, some of our students and their families and anybody in the community is able to get involved. I did meet with Ms. Ingles last week about it, and she invited me here just to kind of explain our vision and answer any questions that you guys might have. The one thing that we were curious to see if you guys would be willing to do would be, just because of the school district servicing students outside of the village limits, if we could offer a temporary permit to allow razors and those type of vehicles to be in the parade, just to kind of give us a better result, allow more families to be in the parade. Obviously, a lot of our rural students and rural families probably don't have golf carts, so it's kind of a way to get them involved as well. Other than that, September 16th, we're pairing it with a honoring 50 years of varsity football. Last year in Piattone was 50 years of football. This year, it's their 50 seasons of varsity. So we're hoping to pair that with that class as well and hopefully get some better turnout. We are gonna start probably about 3:45 lineup at the high school in the U. And then 4 o'clock start time parade route would be the exact same as homecoming, so nothing new there, and then ending at the junior high. Where we're at.
Chief, do we need any other permission for?
Well, they'd probably have to haul them in from the country.
And we did speak with Mr. Spang, the principal over there, and he was fine with allowing trucks and trailers to stay parked in the student lot for that evening if we do have people who are hauling from outside of the village.
Now, when they get done with the parade and it finishes, finishes at the football field.
They would probably have to drive.
Back to the high school.
Correct.
Yeah, cuz there were, with, well, we could be in here, there won't be a lot of parking over that way for that football game. And with the alumni 50 year, probably even less parking.
Yeah, we're actually looking at parking behind the end zone with the carts.
Parking behind the end zone.
So the...
By the south and north?
Off the side of the field, of the square word? North.
North.
Sorry. I know my north is south at the high school, but.
We'll all find out how the weather channel reads us. Yeah, now, we'll make it through it.
All right, well, you have the chief's permissions.
All right, perfect. Thank you, appreciate it.
All right, thank you.
Thank you.
Good luck.
Thank you. Thank you.
All right, in your packet, you have a special event permit application from Cassandra Zabrowski for... Oh, I'm sorry, I'm sorry.
Motion.
Slus, second. Sturba.
Okay. Slus, Sturba. Roll call vote. Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And trustee Jones.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Now, item number six, we have a special event permit application. Birthday party, Cassandra Zabrowski, 512 Locust Lane, 8/20/22. No rain date, 1:00 PM street closure, partial street closure in front of the residence. Cassandra, are you here? Okay. I did talk to chief about this, and he said that there was no problem.
Public works looked at it, they'll drop off barricades like the Friday before they leave and pick them up Monday.
So I'll entertain a motion to approve this. Motion, second.
Jones and Sturba. Roll call vote. Trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
And trustee Hudson.
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Item number seven, application for new business registrations. A is serendipity venue. Calthon Whitley, 422 South Governors Highway, units nine and 10. And, are you here? Yeah, do you want to tell us about your business?
Absolutely. I'm all ready to learn. I'm Calthon Whitley, and I'm a resident of Moni, Illinois, been there for 20 years. I also am a full-time manager at University of Chicago. And so that's my full-time and my part-time is serendipity. I've been doing event planning for the last 20 years and just renting out other space in order to have these events. And I actually come through Piattone to pick my grandkids up on the weekends, and I saw this space for a lease, and I called them. So that's why I'm here today. So as part of the event planning, I do birthday parties, baby showers, small weddings, gender reveals. So that's part of what I do, planning, decorating for these events. Other than renting other spaces out, I just, after 20 years, it's time to move into my own space.
So you're not gonna have any food or anything like that there? How does that work? Do they cater that, or?
It's all cater. So I don't do anything with the cooking at all. So anyone that rent the space out would have to cater their own food.
Do you, do you have any requirements for professional caterers? Or do you allow people just to make their food at home and bring it, or either?
Actually, they can do both.
Okay.
So if they want to get professional, you know, most people like for baby showers, they'll cook their own food and bring it in. Yeah. But people do professional as well.
So it's cool.
The only thing I have would be a microwave.
Okay. Fridge or?
And a fridge.
How many folks come to these events?
Well, over the last year, it's been a minimum of 50.
Minimum of 50?
Mm-hmm.
Okay.
Yeah, so in order to continue a social distancing.
I'm sorry, I didn't, I didn't call that. Maximum or minimum of 50?
The minimum has been 50 for the last few years. Maximum, I've had events up to 100 people.
Okay. And the bomb gardeners are here, so how does that work with parking with you guys? Do you have spaces for 50 cars, 60 cars?
Yeah, I think we can accommodate that, and I think a lot of, I would think a lot of their, the timing would work out well with, I don't anticipate a lot of her parties going on when the daycare is gonna be there and when some of the other businesses are there. That side especially is mostly daycare and subway. And each in our block is, you know, pretty intermittent.
Yeah, so I guess the concern is residential parking behind your mall? I mean, when they start overflowing, they're gonna be parking on the street in front of people's houses, right? On a fairly consistent basis?
Yeah, I, I feel we have enough spaces going over to the other side where the liquor store, the, all the, you know, it's a whole nother section there, as well as on the Route 50 side, too, they can also park.
How many spaces do you have, do you know?
I don't, we don't have it lined out, so I don't, I can't give you exact number. I'd say typically, we have four spaces per unit. We have seven, seven units at each building. You know, that's just right in front of each unit. And there's on the, you know, across the parking lot from each unit, and you have that same amount.
And generally, for the events, so there's generally not day events during the week, Monday through Thursday. So Friday, Saturday, and Sunday, generally, if you need to perform. Well, on a Saturday, you can have a day event. Actually, you can have two events on a Saturday and a Sunday. Before Friday, generally, 6 to 11 is generally the timeframe. So, and I've been over here during that time, it's actually pretty empty. I also do repasses, that would be the only thing that would be held during the day, and it's generally, you know, by appointment.
And you're not requesting a liquor license, right? So you won't be serving alcohol?
I was requesting one, yes.
You are requesting a liquor license?
Yes. And how this worked for me in the past, so for instance, I've rented space at the Creek Park District, and they actually would do like just a day liquor license. Same thing for Moni, but for Piattone, I'm just speaking with Amy, I don't think that's an option. So I was looking to get my own, yes.
If we deny the liquor license, will you still open your shop? And you don't have to answer that.
Would you, would you rent my space?
What's the capacity in the, in the space, in the two units? What's the capacity of, how many people can you hold?
It's 2,800 square feet, 2,818 to be exact. So it can hold at least 100 people. But my events haven't, like I said, over the last couple of years, it hasn't, it hasn't been that big at all. So 50 is really about the amount that will be.
I just have another question for the bomb gardeners. If I could, are you having, are you planning on doing any upgrades to the parking lot to accommodate this use? I mean, like you said, it's not, the spaces aren't delineated, so I mean, I could see it getting kind of confusing for people.
We're not planning that. It's, it's never really been a problem. I mean, even when Sammy's was there, when they were, when they were doing well and they would have, when they would be full, parking lot was never even stressed at all as far as mounted parking. And I'm also thinking, and Cal wouldn't know this better than me, 50 people probably doesn't mean 50 cars either. It probably means, you know, 25 or 30 cars, I'm just guessing, you know? So I think that's another something.
Are there any other questions?
The liquor license, that would be for them to bring in their own alcohol?
Actually, I would serve.
Or you would be serving and selling?
Well, I have packages for, for anything that's liquor, so I wouldn't have to, it wouldn't be you come up and then you're charged for liquor.
Gotcha.
Yeah. It just makes it easier and it is more controlled when, if I can have served liquor rather than bringing it in.
Cuz on here, it says sale of liquor products, and it says no on the application, so that's changing?
Well, because Amy and I was kind of going back and forth with it, and I didn't know, like, you know, how it works, so.
So right now, we don't have a category of liquor. For packaged. For like a banquet facility. Right. So we'd have to create that.
So we're voting, it's just the business license, and then there'll be a future vote for a liquor license?
Yes. Just, yeah, just, this is actually just the reg, business registration.
Okay.
Then it's probably subject to that license, correct?
Yeah, we were hoping to do it all in one day. It's kind of like, she was disgusted.
We don't have a liquor license.
Well, I don't, as Amy said, I don't believe we have a liquor license open for this. So we would have to create the liquor license by ordinance, which we can certainly do if I'm, do the ordinance for the next meeting. That's not a problem, you know, to get that done.
We didn't wanna, can bring you through this process first to see if that would be the logical next step versus paying Jim to do it. No offense.
I always work for free.
You can have an event.
Yeah.
Okay.
Or maybe just go to an event, right?
If there are no other questions, then I'll entertain a motion to approve the application for the business registration.
Motion.
Second.
Slus and Sturba. All right. Trustee Stur, Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
No.
No. All right, trustee Hudson.
Yes.
And trustee Jones.
Yes.
Okay.
7B is an application for a new business for Second Studio, Melissa Ehart, 104 East North Street. I talked to Melissa, she was unable to be here. She's at a baseball game. And so she's had a photography studio in town before, and I don't know if anybody's familiar with what she does, but she does a really good job. You know, she does most of the photography for Main Street Dance, and it's phenomenal. I mean, she does a really good job. So she's opening a new business, it's called Second Studio. It's gonna be at 104 East North Street. The property owner is Vicky Moore, and she'd like to open that business and rent that facility. Are there any questions on that? If not, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Sturba. Trustee Slus.
Yes.
Trustee Sturba.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Trustee Hudson.
Yes.
And trustee Jones.
Yes.
Okay.
Item number eight is a fence variance at 117 West Sumner Avenue. Ronald Benkowski, are you here, Ron?
Yeah, I'm here.
Okay.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm looking to get a little more out of the yard for the kids to run around. It's, I'm a corner lot on 117 Sumner, and first and Sumner. So I was looking to push at least a little five foot, cuz my house sits back about 12 foot from the sidewalk. My garage sits up. I'm two foot off the sidewalk, looking to split the difference, cuz the fence would run right into my garage window as well if I follow the house footprint that it states it wants for the, for the fence. If you look at the layout, what is it, the hole backs, if I'm correct? The hole backs supposed to be with the house back. I wanted to try to push it out a little more and get a little more yard. Just more room for the kids to play, see?
You said you got about 11 feet from the house to the sidewalk?
Approximately, yeah.
Yeah. And you're looking to have the fence, the area in question is five feet from the sidewalk.
Give or take with the, I think it's a one foot 16, so it'd be one foot 16, so it'd be like six foot and, 6.16 feet would be more, more accurate from the plot of service. So I'd be splitting it in half about, that's what I'm looking to do.
We've been through this before with corner lots, and everybody wants to encapsulate as much yard as they can. And if we would approve something like this, we open it up for everybody to do that? Quite frankly, the appearance of that is something we're trying to get away from. That's why we gather that amount of setback.
Yeah, it's the only reason I ask, cuz I see people, their people's fences up to the sidewalk and stuff like that.
And the reason, yes. We're trying to nip that in the bud, because it just doesn't look good. Everybody wants to just expand their backyard, fence it in. But the ones that you're talking about, most of them look terrible.
Right, I'm doing a short fence, so I'm not doing a tall privacy fence. It's more picket type of, it's a dog year, I got a pitcher attached as well. It would be a shorter fence, so you're not trying to cut off everything, is my whole reason.
They approved one a couple weeks ago.
That was, there was landscaping out there, I think they were trying to get around, they didn't.
Just one section of it, but still, and the fence is on the sidewalk side.
I'd make a motion to deny. We need to set a precedent that we don't encroach on that ten-foot sideline.
We got a motion to deny. Is there a second?
I'll second it.
Okay. Jones, Bowden, motion to deny. Okay. Roll call vote. Uh, trustee Jones.
Yes.
Trustee Bowden.
Yes.
Trustee Slus.
No.
No. Okay. Trustee Sturba.
No. No.
No. And trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Yes. Okay, so we have three yeses and two no's.
Yeah, sorry, the motion is denied, I just don't want.
Worth a try, but no.
Next item, ordinance B, an ordinance requesting approval of a variance for a covered porch at eight oh one Louise Lane. You got this information in your packet, there was actually a hearing on this with P and Z last week, and it passed with a hundred percent recommendation to our board. You find the findings of fact there, are there any questions on what that is? The applicant is here, we need, you want him to explain what they're, what they're gonna do? No?
That was up to P and Z.
Does everybody understand what they're doing? All right, I'll entertain a motion to approve.
Motion.
Second.
Bowden and Jones, okay, roll call vote, trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
And trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
We have B, ordinance item two, an ordinance amending certain provisions of the Piattone Village Code relative to a loud number of video gaming cafe liquor licenses, if I understand this correctly, we have one now, we're changing it to two. I'll entertain a motion to approve that, ordinance number twenty-two dash seventeen.
Motion.
Second.
Sturba and Slus, okay, roll call vote, trustee Sturba?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Jones?
Yes.
Right, motion carried.
Item C, resolutions, item number one, Illinois Department of Transportation supplemental, number twenty-three zero 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 dash zero one G M. for maintenance under the Illinois Highway Code by the village of Piattone to appropriate a sum of forty thousand dollars of M F T funds for the purpose of maintaining streets and highways from dates four ten twenty-two to three thirty-one twenty-three. I'll entertain a motion for this appropriation of funds.
Motion. Second.
Jones, Bowden, okay, roll call vote, trustee Jones?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
And trustee Hudson?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
C, resolutions, item two, appointing a clerk pro temp, this is resolution number twenty-two R dash ten, and this is a resolution for the president and board of trustees to appoint a temporary village clerk pro temp, that would be the administrator. Until a successor would be appointed by the village president with consent of the board of trustees duly qualified to serve the village clerk. Entertain a motion to approve that resolution.
Motion.
Second.
Who's second is?
Slus, Sturba.
Sturba, okay. All right, roll call vote, trustee Slus?
Yes.
Trustee Sturba?
Yes.
Trustee Bowden?
Yes.
Trustee Hudson?
Yes.
And trustee Jones?
Yes.
Okay, motion carried.
Item D, we are gonna go into a short executive session, closed regular session, this is for litigation, and I don't believe that any action will be taken, so for the press, I don't know if you want to stick around, if, if not, are there any questions that you have?
No.
For tonight's meeting? Okay, all right. I'll entertain a motion to close regular session.